Good afternoon and welcome to the thirty-eighth meeting of the Honolulu Lieutenant Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices. If you're appearing today, please introduce yourself and your client and spell your names. And if you're here to testify, please come forward, be sworn in, introduce yourself and spell your name for our commission's reporter. With that being said, commissioners, let's move into the public hearing. Calling agenda item number one, application number one nine dash one five four zero zero from MNS LTD.
Good afternoon commissioners, my name is Lobella Romualdo, L-O-B-E-L-L-A-R-O-M-U-A-L-D-O. Authorized agent for MNS LTD. And with me I have Tracy Idee, T-R-A-C-Y-I-D-E, VPN controller for MNS LTD.
Thank you very much. Ms. O'Raugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants who had statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one five four zero zero.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor? Aye. I vote, uh, agenda item number one, application number one nine dash one five four zero zero is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Following agenda item number two, application number one nine dash one five six three nine from G Lion Hawaii LLC. Ms. Cole?
Good afternoon commissioners, Naomi Cole. On behalf of the applicant, present to my right is authorized representative Mark Nezum, N-E-Z-U. We have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you very much. Ms. O'Raugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants who had statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action for this application?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one five six three nine.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number two, application number one nine dash one five six three nine is approved. Thank you, Ms. Cole. Calling agenda item number three, application number one nine dash one five six four zero from G Lion Hawaii LLC.
Good afternoon commissioners, Naomi Cole. On behalf of the applicant, present to my right is authorized representative Mark Nezum. We have no changes to investigative report.
Thank you. Ms. O'Raugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants who had statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Okay, motion to approve application number one nine dash one five six four zero.
Second. Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number three, application number one nine dash one five six four zero is approved. Thank you. These are licensed applications, special license application, agenda item number four. Application number one nine dash one six two seven six from Bamboo Catering Inc.
Good afternoon Commissioners, David Webb, W-E-B-B, authorized agent for Bamboo Catering.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? This is for military ball event, Aloha Bankway.
Yes, sir.
At the Filipino community center.
Correct, in the community center, yes.
Very good, in downtown. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six two seven six.
Second. Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one six three seven six is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number five. These are special license applications, agenda item number five. And these are in sequence, Ms. O'Raugh?
Oh, yeah.
So, uh, calling application number one nine dash one six three three two dash one through one nine dash one six three three two dash twelve from Cantina LLC.
Good afternoon. Daniel Kaialii, K-A-A-I-A-L-I-I, managing member of Cantina LLC. Jonathan Vasquez, J-O-N-A-T-H-A-N-V-A-S-Q-U-E-Z, partner in Cantina LLC.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the application? This is for a total of twelve dates.
Yes, sir.
You guys are currently doing the farmer's market right now.
We are currently doing the farmer's market for food. Um, this would be for the Wednesday night farmer's market to do a bar.
But it's the same location as the weather?
Yes, correct.
Okay, alright, okay. Okay. Uh, motion to approve application number one nine dash one six three three two dash one to application number one nine dash one six three three two dash one two.
Second. Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one six three three two dash one through one nine dash one six three three two dash twelve are approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number six. Calling agenda item number six, transfer application number one eight dash one three five eight three from Hilton Hawaiian Village.
After Mr. Craig's not going to turn on behalf of the applicant. With me is Mr. Jeffrey Yedlin. Last name is spelled Y-E-D-L-I-N, who is the regional director of food and beverage for the applicant. And just one minor change to the investigative report, Mr. Chair. By in the subject, the title, this is transferred to Hilton Hawaiian Village Lissy LLC, from Hilton Hawaiian Village LLC.
And from same entities?
Related.
Related. Right, correct?
Yes.
Just for the record, same entities, right, to and from same?
Yes, related entities.
Related entities, thank you. Thank you.
Who up on the streets and wasn't giving a call. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have questions for this?
I have a question, Mr. Robbora, on page eleven of the investigative report. If you can direct your attention to the last paragraph indicating that may be a violation of HRS Section 21941H. If you can kindly address that, please.
There, there, on that particular issue, there, there is, there is a rule pertaining that, the, the commission does have rules pertaining to reporting of management agreements. We do follow, we did follow that rule, we provided the information as requested. I think there may, the, the point that staff is raising is that there may be a conflict between the rule itself and what the statute provides. But we did provide the information requested pursuant to the commission's rule.
Any other questions?
It's, uh, rule three dash eighty-two dash forty-one point four.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve, uh, transfer application number one eight dash one three five eight three with the changes as indicated by council.
Second. Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number six, transfer application number one eight dash one three five eight three is approved with the verbiage and vice chair Gunnabon's motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. You're going back to Maui?
Yes, I am.
Have a safe flight, Mr. Matt. Uh, calling agenda item number seven, transfer application number one nine dash one five eight four nine. Mr. Lu.
To my right is Mr. Sun Chu Li. He's a member, he's president of council. We have nothing to add to the liquor investigation.
Okay, uh, motion to approve, transfer application number one nine dash one five eight four nine.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Transfer application number one nine dash one five eight four nine is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Lu.
Calling agenda item number eight, application number one nine dash one five seven six eight from Kowa, Kowa Waikiki LLC. Mr. Lu.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Keituzuka authorized representative.
Thank you, Mr. Lu.
Keituzuka authorized representative and representing the applicant. To my right is Mr. Kenji Hirai, K-E-N-J-I-H-I-R-A-I. Um, with respect to the investigative report, um, I, page four of it, uh, describing the, uh, the different floors of the hotel. And I just wanted to clarify, um, that the fourth level currently says three guest rooms. It's actually one guest room per floor. So, a- and if you look right below that, uh, levels five through twelve, uh, says each floor is a three bedroom unit. Uh, and it says, uh, three guest rooms. So, basically, each floor is one guest room and each guest room has three bedrooms, just to clarify. Other than that, uh, no comments to the investigative report.
Very good. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Yes, I have a question on, uh, Mr. Chu Li. On the lower levels. It said notes that there are spaces that are gonna be under obviously a separate lease by, um, another tenant. Is that could be part of your hotel?
You're talking about basement level?
Um, exhibit A three and exhibit, uh, A one, yes, that's right.
God, the basement level.
Right, right, correct.
Yeah, actually, that's, I'm sorry, that's a labeling mistake. At one time, it was considered, uh, for possible leasing, but now it's just gonna be part of the hotel.
What is, and, um, there's banquet on the garden level on exhibit A three?
On the garden left level, there will be a restaurant.
Operated by the hotel?
It will be operated by, uh, SMD Hotel Management.
Madam President.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to approve application number one nine dash one five seven six eight.
Second. Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number eight, application number one nine dash one five seven six eight is approved.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number nine, application number one nine dash one six zero one eight from Makino's Hawaii LLC. Mr. Lu.
Hi, Commissioner Chair, commission members. Kenneth, you're appearing for the applicant. And to my right is Masako Ishizuka, I-S-H-I-T-S-U-K-A, authorized agent and wife of Mr. Kaku Makino, sole member of the LLC. We have, uh, just one change to the investigative report. And that is on, uh, page five at the top, just to clarify the hours of operation. That on Monday through Thursdays, we will also have dinner service between five thirty and nine thirty. And from Friday to Saturdays, we'll be serving lunch also from eleven thirty to three. Other than that, we have no changes.
Mr. Lu, do we still have an unexecuted, um, unexecuted lease still yet between the parties?
I think we've, uh, we filed it, uh. It was, it was maybe submitted very recently, yes.
Alright, very good. Is this Makino Chaya, is it done?
Well, he's actually the older brother. And he has a, a restaurant operation in Las Vegas for the last twenty years and in, in Los Angeles. So, he's actually the one who started this. But I understand it's the younger brother who came here to start the, uh, the rest, restaurants here.
We were just talking about that. We were wondering what happened.
Yeah, really.
Especially for crab legs, so.
As time goes by.
So, we know international marketplace, okay?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Good. Okay, motion to approve, um, application number one nine dash one six zero one eight with the changes of hours as indicated by council.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number nine, application number one nine dash one six zero one eight is approved with the verbiage and vice chair Gunnabon's motion. Thank you, coming.
We also have case number eleven, if you wish to take us out of town.
Uh, you have number eleven, okay, let's take number eleven out of, uh, out of order while you're at the table.
Thank you.
Calling, uh, applica, uh, agenda item number eleven, application number one nine dash one six zero three zero from Makino's Hawaii LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kenneth, you're appearing for the applicant and to my right, Masako Ishizuka and Kaku Makino. Um, Kaku Makino being the sole member of the applicant. So, just one small change to the investigative report for the temporary license, that being on page two under the paragraph, uh, which is underlying licensing effect for more than one year. The second sentence of that paragraph says the license was not vol- canceled voluntarily, it was September seventeen, twenty eighteen. Uh, the word not is, should be deleted. The license was voluntarily canceled on September seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Okay, thank you for the explanation, commissioners?
Okay, motion to approve tenth application number one nine dash one six zero three zero with the indicated change notified council.
Second. Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eleven, application number one nine dash one six zero three zero is approved with the verbiage and vice chair Gunnabon's motion. Let's go back.
Thank you.
To agenda item number ten, application number one nine dash one five seven three two from Pint Size Hawaii Manager LLC.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Christina O'Hira, authorized agent for the applicant. My last name is spelled O-H-I-R-S, and I have no, um, comments or details to the investigator's report.
Thank you, commissioners?
Okay. Uh, motion to approve tenth application number one nine dash one five seven three two.
Second. Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number ten, application number one nine dash one five seven three two is approved.
Thank you.
Let's go to agenda item number twelve, application number one nine dash one five eight four eight from JB Cajun Inc. DBA kicking Cajun caemup. K-K-K.
Good afternoon.
Kicking Cajun caemup? That's what my intentions were. I don't know what everybody else was thinking. Good afternoon, Ms. Lu.
Good afternoon Commissioners, I'm Minya Romu, CFO of JB Cajun Inc. On my right is applicant Hayan Higuchi. And there is no corrections necessary in the investigative report.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action for agenda item number twelve?
It's good. Motion.
Yes, right.
Motion to, uh, motion to approve stock transfer application one nine dash one five eight four eight.
Second. Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I vote aye. Agenda item number twelve, application number one nine dash one five eight four eight is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling, uh, moving into request, following agenda item number thirteen, request number one nine dash one six two one six from Stony Castro Club Inc.
Good afternoon, my name is Sabrina Hazelhorse. This is Dustin Pokrass, D-U-S-T-I-N-P-O-K-R-A-S-S.
Okay, before we do any further, uh, this commission requested some, uh, corrected documents. Do you have those documents?
Yeah, hang on.
Give us a minute just to review. So, before I open it up to the commissioners, um, I don't, I don't see the changes. Am I missing them, Commissioner Lee? It looks like I'm looking at the same document that was submitted on March of twelfth.
It looks to be some clarifications, but we're looking at over here.
Yeah.
You give us a second.
Mr. Pokrass.
I'm sure.
Yeah, you wanna take, walk us through what your changes or what you're indicating here?
Yes, so at the bottom of the parking lot here, below there's, below this area here is where the main parking is, below here. I had it closed off here, and what I did was cut one of the parking stalls off so people can have straight access to the sidewalk for entry, for exit purposes.
So, on your, on your updated, can you show me where, where you altered your?
Yes.
Plan?
Right here, there was, it was closed off here with barricades. What I did, there's an extr- there's an opening.
Entrance and exit ID check?
Yes.
What are you closing off now?
So, we're just opening it up more here so people can exit and enter from the sidewalk here.
Okay.
Through the parking lot. We just took one parking stall off for an entrance and exit.
So, based off this diagram, it looks like your premises is connected in.
The, I'm sorry?
Based off this diagram that we received, it looks like the premises is connected.
Oh, I see. Oh, so there's a part of the sidewalk, I see where you're talking about. So, the sidewalk comes down to a, to a guardrail. And it's already, it's an installed guardrail, it's part of the fixture, uh, right here. Right here would be the guardrail leading to another, the other part of the sidewalk. So, the entrance would be right here with barricades here and here tying to the guardrail.
This is the kinda information we kinda wanted, we wanted you to pres- um, present to us because, I mean, we can imagine a lot of things.
Right.
But if you provided photos or some, some other kinda documentation so we can have a clear idea of what you're requesting.
Okay.
That was one of the requests.
We wanna make sure.
A more clear picture.
We want you to ensure us that your licensed premises will not jeopardize anybody on Comer Mail Highway.
Right, okay.
That's the concern because that's a very busy, uh, thoroughfare and that's the main street passing your venue.
So, what I measured.
Yeah, but we don't want you to explain to us.
Okay.
We wanna be able to look at it so that we can make that decision of whether or not your event is in the best entrance, uh, excuse me, interest of the general public's safety in that particular area. That is the first and foremost mission of this commission.
Okay. So, in creating the exit to the back side of the parking lot as, uh, opposite of Camp Highway, that's what we had all discussed last week, which I thought, I, I just thought I understood it a little differently.
Commissioner Lee, do you have any follow-up?
Um, based on this documentation, I, I, I don't think it provides me any ways enough to understand what's, um, going on. And exactly what the license, the premises would be for our investigators to even verify.
Mr. Pokrass.
Yes.
Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Oh, it's Pokrass, but, yeah.
So, we had very lengthy discussion the last time we were here. And I think that, and I thought that it was really clear, um, what this commission was requesting for. And I do understand sometimes, first time doing an event or being an outdoor venue, not knowing what we're expecting. Um, and I, I think we had lengthy discussion to discuss that, which was discussing the Amara Road as well as Camp Highway.
And I believe I bypassed Amara Road and Camp Highway is, so, okay, I see.
What I'm looking at, basically, let me summarize for you what I'm looking at, what you had a week to discuss. You gave us the same drawing. Deleted the sidewalk and you took a portion of the parking lot. You kept the entrance and exit the same place, which is still entering and exiting on Camp Highway.
It's not on Camp Highway, and that's what I was trying to describe last.
Your own diagram shows that Camp Highway entrance and exit, is this the diagram?
Right, if you notice this line here, this is our retaining wall right here. So, this isn't Cami- Camp Highway is another eighteen feet from this retaining wall. So, that's why, that's what I had described the last time we were here.
The last time you were here, I also pulled up a Google map on my own because your map doesn't, we need to visualize as an attendee, as the public attending this event, what exactly are the dangers and what are they, what are they being faced with? And like I said, I pull up a Google map which shows us, I don't go to your establishment, I'm looking at the people attending this event. They go to your establishment and whether there's a retaining wall or what the situation is. Your, and I will emphasize again to you, and I don't know how to make this any clearer, is that you are set, your entrance is set to a road that is going to the only entrance of your parking. Is that right? Amara Road, Amara Road turns off, you can either ta- take a left or right depending where you're coming from on Camp Highway.
Yes.
And that is a road that enters into your parking. You're proposing to have your entrance and your exit along that road there, that opening of that road.
Okay, with sidewalk access, they, they no longer have to come to this side. So, we'll have the, this side entrance, we'll have an access point to the sidewalk this way.
And the sidewalk isn't part of your, your extended area?
No, we'll close the parking lot completely.
Well, let me ask this question, is that a city and county sidewalk or is that?
Holiva Town Center.
Pardon?
Holiva Town Center.
They own this sidewalk?
Um, from what I understand, will, I, the lending of it.
Or is that leasement granted?
That I couldn't answer, I don't wanna speculate.
And how do, how do we, how do we help you?
Okay.
Well, I think we we still have another week.
Okay. I'm gonna get this right, I've got the I've got the perfect idea now.
You gotta get it right, not us.
No, absolutely.
Well, I think we should continue this matter for another week. And recommend to you that you clarify these drawing. I think pictures of the location would be beneficial for you. That the Commissioners could look at everything and get a uh lay of the land. I know a few of the Commissioners are familiar, have been out in that way, so I need to respect their judgment.
Sure.
Uh because as we've said many a time, our main concern is the safety of the general public. Because that is the only way in and the only way out. Holiva Town, it's Camp Highway.
Yes. Um in interest to your other questions that you had with the pre-sale tickets, forty, we've only sold pre forty pre-sale, we gave five to a couple sponsors of the event. So there's forty-five uh adds to gonna four, so you know, and uh the time restraint question was. Or the time factor was uh it was eleven thirty, music stops, everybody out by one, clear the parking lot now. Um alcohol sales and music stop at eleven and parking lot cleared by eleven thirty-five.
Well, we appreciate that, but.
Okay, and then I will come with the accurate proposal next week.
So let me be clear with you.
Okay.
Everything that you've stated and conditioned on your new business hours as well, can you please present that in writing and what you're committed to do? And what time is gonna be your last call?
Absolutely.
And you can scrap this entire drawing here and start all over again, okay?
Sure.
And with pictures on what we're looking at or what. What we should be prepared to see next week, so if you're claiming your entrance is gonna move or you're gonna have an entrance, clearly diagram that here. As an entrance, because this is what you're stating down here, an entrance and exit is down here. It's different from what you're presenting to us today, which you're claiming the entrance and exit is up here, is that your intent?
Yes. Um so my intent will be, I have one other entrance, and so. Along this where the restrooms are on the backside of the building, there's I just parentheses, some restrooms, just as y'all had showed some interest in where people will use the restrooms.
Where's the restrooms are indicated in this drawing as well?
No, but I'll add them, I just showed whereabouts they would be on the drawing. There's a staircase here, we can make this walk, there's a whole sidewalk and staircase.
Show us, show us next week where your staircase, bathrooms, everything.
I will, yeah. Perfect.
Then you can, then we don't have to walk around and figure out where everything is.
Okay.
And this is not gonna be your first road, you intend to have other events there. This will be useful tool for you in the future and good practice for you.
That's what surprises me the most, is that this is the same one we pr- we got approved in October. That's why I just reprinted the same floor plan.
And you came before this commission?
Mark Cook did, my partner.
Okay, um.
That's why I'm surprised, that's.
I'm surprised too, because either I was not at that meeting, because I'm a real stickler for these types of events.
I understand completely.
Very, very, very thorough about this type of events, especially with the number of attendees that are attending.
I think this entrance and exit strategy, the the one I'll come up with next week is perfect anyway, I think that.
It should be, this is your last opportunity of come forward.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
May I also suggest you make representations of a retaining wall, if you could delete on your new diagram, where is the retaining wall, how high? Um you may write representations, the distance within the highway, if you can mark that on the diagram.
Absolutely.
That'd be useful, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
As I always say, a picture is what a thousand.
I'll start taking some pictures, I'm gonna.
Thank you so much.
Y'all will be inundated with pictures.
Hold on, hold a minute, yeah.
What difference do you?
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Lucky for you, I won't be here next week, so I'll be excused from that meeting, but motion to continue. Um request number one nine dash one six two one six to April twenty-four. Twenty-five, excuse me, April twenty-five, yes.
Okay.
Twenty-five. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirteen, request number one nine dash one six two one six is continued to April twenty-five, two thousand nineteen. With the conditions and requirements in vice chair Gannabon's uh motion.
I'm gonna make one other suggestion, uh as opposed to having the Commissioners your diagram. As your case is called, could you provide it to the administration before so we have a chance to look at it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh calling agenda item number uh fourteen, request number one nine dash one six four zero three from Robin K Ishikawa. Uh on behalf of Sodexo America.
Good afternoon, Chairperson, Members of Commission, this is I, Gabriel Provenza, on behalf of the applicant. To my right is Mark Takamoto, he's the Vice President of the App. Um. If you could answer any questions you might have, otherwise please approve.
I'm I'm sorry, just out of curiosity, I wasn't aware that Sodexo had any contracting services with Honolulu Airport. I thought it was just city and county properties.
So there it's in the regular with uh NA.
Right there. Right, uh motion to approve request number one nine dash one six four zero three.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fourteen, request number one nine dash one six four zero.
Thank you very much.
Three is approved, thank you, sir. Uh let's go to return to item number fifteen. This is a review of application number one seven dash one one three four three from Seven Eleven Stores.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission Members, can I throw a period for the applicant? Uh Seven Eleven is, this is a new store, they're gonna be a tenant in a shopping center. Uh the owner of the shopping center has to deliver the premises to Seven Eleven before he can construct his improvements. The owner cannot. Has been delayed in getting the permits to complete the shopping center, and that's the reason why we're asking for an extension, twelve months. Commission is so.
We redo, okay, so how much time do you need?
Twelve months.
One year?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Motion to approve request.
Yep.
Application number one seven dash one one three four three for twelve months extension.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor? I I vote aye, agenda item number fifteen is approved for an additional one year.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number sixteen, review of application number one eight dash one two zero two three from IHS Spirits. Will be a island vintage organic, I want you to Mr. Luke.
To my right is Paul Kean, K A N G, he's the applicant, he is president with council, Wayne Luke, uh today I brought him to tell you exactly what he's gonna want.
When we target open uh May, uh early May, but uh you say on the construction, so. It's kind of out of my control, I I'm pushing my contractors, everybody, but.
Totally understand. We totally understand, uh so with that being said, how much many?
Three months.
Uh I would like to say June though, I mean, I want it to be.
Three months.
Three, six.
Three, six.
Maybe June, July.
Three, six, you can always come in on it.
Six.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can always come in, three months.
Three.
Sure.
It's ambitious, ambitious schedule, Mister Luke, three or six? You wanna come down?
Three.
Doesn't cost anymore to go six.
Okay. Three, six, uh what? Three, three, speaking of three.
Three, uh three.
Three months.
Three.
Thank you so much.
It's your pleasure, you're welcome.
You get so much money.
All right.
You're the labor dispute that got.
Oh, please, uh uh Mr. Luke, don't bring up it every time you're chair in this commission.
I'm ready for this week. So let's let's try. No dispute, okay.
It did not tell, yeah.
Uh motion to approve um application number one eight dash one two zero two three, um request for three month extension.
Second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number sixteen is approved for an additional three months extension.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number seventeen. This is a review of uh application number one eight dash one two eight zero three from Stu Burn and Stonewall Brewing Company.
That for the Commissioners, Darren Garry, Stu Baum and Stonewall Brewing Company owner.
Thank you.
How much time do you need?
Six months, I'll take the six.
Can we hear from um Enforcement, please? Enforcement. Can we hear from Enforcement for agenda item number seventeen, a review of Stu Baum and Stonewall Brewing Company?
No, they're never opening.
I'm I'm sorry.
Extending, extending, yeah.
They didn't pick up yet.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a compliance review.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was getting scared, I was, I was crying out.
I was getting scared.
Oh, I'm sorry. You threw me off, but you say pleaded the.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I'm behind.
Six months it is, okay, motion to.
Come on, grab me, oh, like I said, I haven't slept for two days. Down on those boats.
Yeah, motion to approve application number one eight dash one two eight zero three, um extending for another six months.
Second.
There we go, very good, thank you, Commissioner. Agenda item number eighteen, review of application number one eight dash one three seven eight seven is approved for an additional six months.
Oh, no, seventeen.
Seventeen.
We got a vote.
We got a vote, oh, yeah, okay, let's go. Can we strike that motion in action, please, uh Mister? Uh agenda item number seventeen, review of application number one eight dash one two eight zero three is approved for an additional.
It was moved in second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number seventeen. Application number one eight dash one two eight zero three is approved for an additional six months.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, battery's getting very low.
Uh moving on to agenda item uh item number eighteen, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so this is agenda item number eighteen, review of application number one eight dash one three seven eight seven, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Kevin Aoki, A O K I, I'm the uh owner and authorized person.
Thank you very much, how much time do you need?
Um well, similar to the other person, the construction is delayed and um we're waiting for permits to clear. Um so it's all it needs six to eight months.
Six to eight months?
I mean, I I think we can do it in six months, but I'm just.
Let's go, let's go, how about a year?
Yeah.
A year.
Now we still literally.
Yeah.
When it's done, you can come back.
Or would you like to come back, Mr. Aoki, after six months, one year?
After six months?
Yeah, no, when when year is, you think it's appropriate time?
Yeah, I I think I can complete everything in six months, I'm just giving myself a little buffer.
Yeah, so let me ask you this, you think you can get those permits in six months?
We're very close together.
Commissioner Lee?
Uh Commissioner Lee, can he get it in six months?
We got people waiting for two years to get, to just get a patio extension approved. But uh it's up to totally up to.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to take the year then.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
All right, motion to approve application number one eight dash one three seven eight seven, um extending for one year.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number eighteen, uh application number one eight dash one three seven eight seven is approved for one year extension.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Aoki.
Thank you, can I have some action on the adoption of decision and orders, please?
Yes, Chair, motion to approve the adoption of decision and order for agenda items nineteen to twenty-four as previously circulated.
Second, moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I I vote uh I vote aye, agenda item number nineteen to twenty-four are approved. In conclusion. Calling uh let's move into adjudication from the agenda item number twenty-five, Bob's Sports Bar.
Good afternoon, Deputy Corporation Council, Paige O'Gott. Um.
Call, can we have a call, please, so we can get some people. And by the way, um is Bob's Sports Bar still open?
I am not aware if they're still open or not.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, Chair, it's your turn.
Go ahead, can you make the call, Daniel, please, uh? Do we have verification if they're don't do this?
Cause I.
Do you, do you?
I think we're done.
Yeah, we're done.
Could you put it on the record whether or not uh licensed you're stolen for business, if you know?
I can read. I can. If you see. I can read.
Do you want it on the record? Uh do you want a recess and I can go look it up on LCIS?
Um. Well, let's let's get the recommended default judgment.
Um Chairperson's admission.
Proper, proper, uh so there is no answer from the fall, right, okay.
Chairperson's admission, I spoke with Mister uh with Greg Nishioka earlier today, who informed me that someone would be present from Bob's Sports Bar. Um they, he informed me that they would be requesting a contested hearing, but. That with the fact that no one is here, I'm not sure.
On the border, so counsel, please, the direction, they are not here.
You can refer to fault or you can, I mean, you think.
We also had three continuances on this matter.
So.
You're a very popular name on the agenda.
I mean, always subject to the, subject to the uh jurisdiction, right?
Thank you.
As no one is present, and they were representation made to me that someone would be present this afternoon, um I will be moving for a default in this matter.
Very good, thank you, that's what we were looking for. Commissioner?
Uh motion to accept the default um judgment and agenda and agenda item number twenty-five.
Second, moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-five, a default uh judgment is issued in the amount of?
In the amount, in total amount of one thousand three hundred fifty dollars.
One thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Could we have it for each count, please?
For count one, it's five hundred dollars, it's a first offense. Count two is also five hundred dollars, it's a first offense. And count three is three hundred fifty dollars, it's a first offense.
Motion to accept the default judgment. Do I have to read them individually, Hannah?
Um if if you would just repeat the uh the default judgment penalty recommendations in your motion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, motion to.
By the agenda.
Okay, mo- motion to approve the default judgment.
One to three.
For agenda item number twenty-five, for charge number one, five hundred dollars, charge number two, five hundred dollars. Charge number three, three hundred fifty dollars for a total of one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second, moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-five, uh default judgment for charge number one in the amount of five hundred dollars. For charge number two in the amount of five hundred dollars, and for charge number three, three hundred and fifty dollars is approved. For a total uh default judgment in the amount of one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number twenty-six, Bob's Sports Bar. Could we have a call, please? Did anybody answer?
Your order's up? Orange pizza?
I'm glad the, I'm glad the cameras are off.
Yeah, exactly, that's correct, I mean.
Have you seen, what's this, Dirty Night Live? Okay.
Um as no one is apparently here for my for Bob's Sports Bar, I spoke with Greg Nishioka earlier. Today who informed me that someone would be present from Bob's Sports Bar, as no one is here, I'm going to be moving for a default judgment in this matter.
Thank you very much.
Motion to accept the default judgment for agenda item number twenty-six.
Um second, I also note this matter has been continued three times. So noted, thank you. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-six, default judgment or charge number one and charge number two.
Charge number one is a first offense recommended fine is two hundred fifty dollars, charge number two is also a first offense recommended fine is three hundred fifty dollars for a total of six hundred dollars.
Motion to accept the default, jump in in, agenda item number twenty-six, charge number one, um for two hundred fifty dollars. And charge two, three hundred and fifty dollars for a total of. and charge two, three hundred and fifty dollars for a total of six hundred dollars, second.
Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-six, uh default judgment in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for charge number one and three hundred and fifty dollars for charge number two for a total of six hundred dollars. Moving on to agenda item number twenty-seven, um the Ginza nightclub.
Chair, for this and all of the other um
Mm-hmm.
uh matters on the adjudication calendar, it was our understanding, both Mister Kuchis and my understanding, that we would not be able to have forum this evening, therefore, I'm gonna move to continue um agenda item number twenty-seven to the next available date for a um
Okay.
just I'm gonna ask to continue till the next available.
Yeah, okay, so we'll go right down the line, commissioner, can I have the action on agenda item number twenty-seven?
Yes.
Yes, Chair, motion to continue, agenda item number twenty-seven to the next available date, second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-seven is continued to the next available date, calling agenda item number twenty-eight.
Chair members of the commission, um we were under the impression that they would not have forum this evening, therefore, I'm gonna ask to continue this to the next available date.
Uh motion to continue, agenda item number twenty-eight to the next available date, second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-eight is continued to the next available date, calling agenda item number twenty-nine, the Ginza nightclub.
Chair members of the commission, I'm gonna ask to continue this to the next available date.
Motion to continue, agenda item number twenty-nine to the next available date, second.
They moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-nine is continued to the next available date, calling agenda item number thirteen.
Chair members of the commission.
The Gin, excuse me, the Ginza nightclub.
I'm gonna ask to also be continuing this to the next available date, please.
Motion to continue, agenda item number thirty to the next available date.
Second, move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty is continued to the next available date, calling agenda item number thirty-one, the Ginza nightclub.
Chair members of the commission, I'm going to be asking to continue this to the next available date.
Motion to continue, agenda item number thirty-one to the next available date, second.
They moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-one is continued to the next available date, calling agenda item number thirty-two. The J uh Ginza nightclub.
Chair members of the commission, I'm gonna be asking to continue this to the next available date, same.
Motion to continue, agenda item number thirty-two to the next available date, second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-two is continued to the next available date, calling agenda item number thirty-three, the Ginza nightclub.
Chair members of the commission, I'm going to be asking to continue this to the next available date, please.
Thank you.
Motion to continue, agenda item number thirty-three to the next available date, second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-three is continued to the next available. Thank you, ma'am, calling agenda item number thirty-four. Our administrative action report for January, February and March, may I have the motion to ratify that document?
So moved. Or motion to, motion to.
Ratify.
Ratify um the administrative action reports for January, February and March twenty nineteen.
Second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-four is approved, calling agenda, agenda item number thirty-five. Do you have any comment? We all received our update from Assistant Administrator Hori, any question? Agenda item number thirty-six, administrative matters, do we have any administrative matters?
Not.
Thank you, Mister. Thank you all for coming.